Mrs. King, we can't hear her.
Hi. You all see her? Sorry, I just like, okay, this is Izzy Isabel Murphy. And I picked Izzy because Izzy is the perfect type of learner. She, in all my years as an educator, I'm hard pressed to think of many former students who are as imaginative, creative, and passionate as Izzy. One is quick to notice her undeniable gifts as an artist. Izzy sees all things in its artistic form. She translates assignments, assessments, and daily tasks into works of art, literally. Like you have, you're hard pressed to find words amongst pictures. She truly is incredible about this, and she has an incredible ability that allows her to think outside the box and reach the higher level of critical thinking than all our students aspire. Fourth, Izzy is able to predict and ask what is questioned a lot, and place herself in any scenario, which allows her to own her learning experience. I also see her strengths facilitating her ability to understand where other children, as well as adults, are coming from, making her a wonderful friend to others. So congratulations. Let me say, go art! Ooh, we're gonna go to Tim's water. Thank you so much.
This is an unusual character award because this is the first time, I believe, that Eaton Elementary has ever given a character award to a student who is no longer in our building. This student, at the end of September, Mrs. Schnauffer put out a call that she needed help with some very technologically gifted fourth graders who were staying after two days a week to work on computer-related topics. She struggled with challenging these students, and a high school teacher suggested Brandon Nabel as a possible student helper. She had no idea what a great person she was getting. And Brandon decided to help the students with learning HTML website language, and it was a great thing to teach our students who are now, as at the tender age of eight, nine years old, developing websites. He's, in a unique kind of way, for a student helper from the high school, he's incredibly dedicated. You can count on him being there. A lot of times, our student helpers from the high school are students who have outside interests, sports, and other things that take them away, but for Brandon, this has been a priority, and he's been there diligently. I asked for supporting documentation, and Mrs. LaGroda, who was a sixth grade teacher who I had as a student at Lakeshore Middle School, what does that say? Was said, "He was very diligent when he was a student, a typical kid, responsible, with a great work ethic, a well-rounded student with a good head on his shoulders." And she says, "I remember him, if he were one of my teachers, I would intentionally place him in a group where students needed assistance." It's glad to hear that he's being noticed. Please come forward, Eaton Elementary's Character Award for Brandon Nabel.
Mr. Graff. Mrs. Banks is going to present the causes. And I didn't tell Mr. Banks before.
Good evening. Mrs. Kara Kelly, Maggie Finney. Come up. Most people develop a perception of what goes on in high school guidance offices based on their personal experiences. For some, the guidance office represents a place where they need to go for the working papers, or where they are summoned when their grades are dropped. Others remember it as a location where they pleaded their case when wanting to drop an elective class in order to get an early dismissal in their senior year. A few people here tonight might even recall doing actual post-high school college and career research in the guidance office. Whatever guidance office may represent to many students, parents, and graduates who visit, we have such to say that this is an absolute certainty. When something unfortunate happens to a student or family in the community of Eaton, our guidance office is usually the first destination in schools for people seeking emotional support. The two young women standing here before you tonight, Kara Kelly and Maggie Finney, have given us permission to share their very sad experience in 2008, the untimely, unexpected death of their fathers. And although the details surrounding the deaths of their dads didn't match exactly, they never knew, the response by each of these ladies was un- uncommonly but heartily similar. They became dedicated to helping others in our school and community deal with those past similar tragic losses. First, by enrolling in a structured group facilitated by myself, and then taking over and actually helping to run the group for the past two years, Kara and Maggie have worked tirelessly to recruit other students in our school who have experienced the loss in their lives. They have also served as the best examples possible for other students who look to them as a model of what to do when tragedy strikes. These two maintain their grades, their friendships, their activities, and mold it for others that life does go on after a sudden death. Suicides, heart attacks, plane crashes, stillbirth, auto accidents, cancer, and other terminal illnesses, these are just a few topics that the group members discuss in a supportive and conscientious atmosphere, so that they may get on with many other roles that define them, like taking in classes, having part-time jobs, doing homework, taking care of their siblings, or their grandparents, performing as musicians, artists, athletes, dancers. These are just a few of the roles that the children in our community are expected to play on a daily basis. Thanks to the efforts of Kara Kelly and Maggie Finney. Students in our school who suffer a traumatic death in their family, how ways to turn here in our school. And because of their recruiting efforts, these student members are represented from every grade, seven to twelve, and those who have suffered a loss need to look no further than examples that Kara made, to see that life does go on, and it does get better. Please help us make, Maggie and Kara, for their selflessness, their time, their dedication to making life easier for those who have experienced a vastness in their life.
Thank you very much for being with us this evening. I want to start off by giving a little history on a number of capital construction projects that we still have open, and that we'll be dealing with this evening. We'd like to get them closed out, we have a couple of projects remaining that are pretty critical to getting that facilitated. First of all, what we call the shared decision-making project number two, and that started in 2006. And in that project, we had a number of items that we did, it was a fairly sizable project, which included the track, repelling the football field and spunts and bad stops, the gutter and walkway going to the well development, removal of the center track, the elementary school paving, both here and at GLP, replacing the roof of the high school and the elementary school, some brick flashing work here at the high school, the new bleachers at the football field, the press box, the replacement of the gym lockers at the high school, refurbishing the auditorium seats, both at the elementary and the high school, the reconstruction of the elevators at the high school and the elementary, the TVs and the wiring, which are throughout the building, anti-insulation at the elementary school, the dust collection system here at the high school, room 130, replacing the HVAC units for the auditorium and the gymnasium at the elementary. The fire alarm system was replaced with GLP, and a new emergency generator was installed there as well. There was some additional asbestos removal, and we added the blue bleachers at the high school gym, as well as the pool, as well as replacing the kiln. That was shared decision-making project number two. In 2008, we took on another project because it was a aid package called Excel Aid through the state, we took advantage of our share of that money by developing a capital construction project. In that project, we replaced the roof system at GLP, added some additional insulation and fascia work over the windows, we replaced the HDC unit in the classrooms at GLP and some cabinetry work, reworked the water for the heating system at GLP, installed what's called PTACs, or packaged thermal air conditioning units, for the nurses and the main offices, both GLP and the elementary, installed a new fascia and stoppage system at GLP, did some plaster and painting at GLP, installed the new perimeter security lighting, new heating controls, new rooftop exhaust system, and new porticos at GLP. We also did some repointing of the chimney and repair work at Eaton Elementary. Those are the two capital construction projects, and tonight, we want to talk to you a little bit, because item D under new business of your agenda, we're going to ask you to approve two additional items, one from the Excel project and one from the shared decision-making team. With the remaining monies from both of those projects, we developed a bid to do some work that was required, one by Erie County Water, and that was to install, was called backflow preventers. Those are installed on the main water lines coming into both Eaton Elementary and GLP, and the purpose for them is if a water system, county water system goes down, it will not allow any of our water that's already within the building to exit and flow back into the county water system. That's why they're called backflow preventers. Here at the high school, we have a system already installed, so we don't have to worry about the high school at this point, but the county has, has already flagged both GLP and the elementary school for this work. We developed, through Troutman, a plan to do that, we sent out for bids and received them back, and tonight, we're going to ask you to award one of those to Newmarco in the amount of $177,200 to install those backflow preventers. Now, what you normally would see, if you're familiar with some of the larger businesses around here, such as Walmart or the New Lowe's, if you drive into their driveways, you see those big aluminum boxes that are out there. Inside of those boxes are the backflow preventers. And we didn't like the look of that, and we didn't think that it would be appropriate, particularly at Eaton Elementary. So what we did is we asked to have prefabricated buildings, concrete buildings that are basically like small little cabins, to house those things. They're manufactured, and they would be brought in on a truck based on the size and the specifications that are developed, and installed out there, and they'll look a whole lot better than those boxes. So that bid has been, been put out, as I say, that, that one has been returned, and tonight, we're going to ask you to award that bid. Under the, under the, that's part of the shared decision-making project. Under the Excel project, we also developed a bid to replace the swimming pool lights. If you've been in the pool lately, you've noticed that the lights are slowly but surely dying, and we are ready to a point where the light level is really getting pretty dim, and we need to deal with that. We contacted manufacturer and had them bring in an LED light, and basically, that was kind of at my insistence that we go with LEDs for two reasons. One, because that's the way to the future. LEDs are, they last a whole lot longer, and the second reason is because we own, we own our own power plant, and I need to cut our power usage anyplace I can. So LEDs are much, much more efficient than fluorescents, than HID fixtures like are on the outsides of the buildings, and I did contact the manufacturer, they allowed us to borrow a fixture, we put it into the pool, make sure that it would work, and we had it in there probably a month and a half, and it worked fine. Took some light level readings, and everything looks to be very good. So we developed a plan through Troutman, as I said, with the light scheme, and bid that project out as well, and that, we're going to ask you to award Wyden Electric tonight in the amount of $65,000. We did meet with the infrastructure committee, we were over all of this material, so that they were aware of what was going on, and they felt that this was something that we should continue to move forward with, and as I said, hopefully, once we get these two projects taken care of, that will expend pretty much all of the money from those two capital construction projects, and we can close them out, and we can receive our AID for them. All right? At this point, if you have any questions on those two projects, we'd be more than happy to, to make an answer to them. Basically, these projects are being funded by access money in Eaton. Correct. Money, money exists at this point.
Yeah, it hasn't been spent yet.
Right.
Where were the buildings set for backflow?
Where were they set? They have to be close to where the main is in our building. In other words, at the Eaton Elementary School, it would be close to the intersection of School View and 62 in that grass area. At GLP, the smaller parking lot, which we always call the Loses Link, that, in that area of the parking lot is where that building is going to happen.
That's moving in and out closer to the street.
Yeah, but it will be out closer to the street.
And how tall is this cabin or structure that you're, when you say cabin, I think in New York, ceilings, it's close to that, it's probably, it's probably, what, 10 by 12?
Probably the height of it is about 9 feet. And Dave explains it very well, you go down Kmart, the big, or just down to Florida, and then you see them exposed all over down the street, you see all this piping with these backflow connections down there, you don't have to protect them here. The purpose of the hot box, it's called, is basically to protect it, because the water line comes out through the valves, it would freeze, so you have to put a protection box to conceal it, and also, there's a little heater inside that to prevent freezing when the line is about great.
This could like, I know a lot of the farmers in town, it's more of a subject that's not that big, and other businesses have a mid-size.
That's correct.
Is it because of maybe the amount of water we have?
No, it's, well, the size of it, the actual physical size of the, the backflow devices and the bypass, it's all based on the size of the line, either four inch or six inch line, so as soon as you get above a residential size, you need the big valves.
One thing you have to remember is that it's not simply taking our piping up and city piping up and putting this thing in between, it's actually putting two of them in, one that is going to run normally, and one additional that is going to run when the first one gets tested every year, so we're constantly required. So there's actually two of them installed in this, this one.
Again, it's the Erie County Water Authority's requirement to put it out close to the, to the service, so there's less opportunity for any connections or anything from there into the building. And basically, it's protecting this whole water service from any siphoning or anything if the water pressures were to change.
Is it required? You can't do your testing, you'll save hours.
It's mandated, exactly, they give you the specs, the pieces, the equipment, everything you have to put in, and they've already approved them.
We actually had the same requirements of what we intended to do, and they had approved.
Design, they've got an end year's report that's submitted to the company, the company's been doing this for the last 10 years.
The county requires two of them?
Two.
Yeah. Some of the things.
Please, please. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a bypass, the line comes up, it goes through the back, but then there's another bypass, so when you're flushing it and you're checking the valves, you still have continuous service.
Question on the electrical bid there, the one bid was, was alternate one, why, why did we not go on alternate one?
There was, we had a specified dollar amount for this project, for all the dollars we could use just for the high school or this main project. We were concerned that we might be close to the maximum on that, we didn't want to take a bid that was just over that, along with the incidental costs, and not be able to go more than anything. So we took an alternate to not do some of the lights over the seating area, I think there were six or so, one by fours or two by fours.
That was good. So change it to the bidder's, despite not selling the dollar? For the low bidder's?
That is correct. And per the contract documents and all AIA documents, the owner has the choice of awarding a base bid and any alternates in any order he chooses, if there's more than one alternate, to rise to the base bid. But we had the budget for it, that was the desired scope of work, so we went with getting the most work done and let that determine who the low bidder was. And then interviewed him, reviewed his work scope, and made that recommendation.
What was the general construction piece here that all the baser were checking on?
The general construction, again, was, this project, as Dave mentioned, there were a lot of pieces that were left over, and this project was not ready to bid about a year ago. Then when we determined what dollars were left that could come out of this fund, we only had the dollar amounts to do a separate, a certain amount of the general construction work. Actually, all of this work, we put all together, there were more general construction items, so we took all the remaining general construction items that we had, and instead of selecting just some of them to do, we said, "Let's bid them all, it's scheduled as deducts alternates," so we could choose which ones, if any, we could take. We awarded the electric, and the first priority was really the backflow devices, and then we looked to see what dollars we had left. There were no dollars left that were able to purchase any of those items.
How many dollars are left?
I believe it's about 50, 62,000 with incidental costs, that's soft cost and construction dollars.
So why would we take alternate one on the electrical bid, if we had that much room?
Well, the base bid was 100 for, say, a dollar. Alternate one minus 50 dollars, it would still be 100 dollars that we would have to have.
Will you take any of the general construction bids, right?
No.
We didn't take any general construction one?
We did not award any general construction.
Because I'm just trying to, trying to understand why if we had that much room left for still a little, why we wouldn't take the extra light back?
When we looked at the, the alternate bids, if you look at all the prices and take all the base bids and the alternates, the price for all those were very inconsistent. Really, if you take all of the three alternates, you're left with no work.
Which three alternates?
He's, he's in, he's in, he's in general construction. He's wondering about the electrical though, right?
Well, I was curious, you said the reason you didn't take the alternate on the electrical one was because you were concerned it was going to be too high?
That was, that was only based on because for that project, we only had 53, we had 83 dollars only for that high school project. We weren't sure, and that's soft cost also, we weren't sure that the bid were going to come in at that 65.
So the money for the general construction can't be used for the electrical?
That is correct.
Are there two for grants?
There are two different funding.
It's building specific, and I don't believe any of the general construction work was for the high school, which is the funding.
So we're, so we're leaving on the table, how much in the grant?
I think it's about 62,000, with some contingencies put in the awarded bids, about 10,000 contingency put in the other two bids, the electrical and mechanical, just for unknown conditions if they came up. Between 62 and 70,000 dollars is left.
Thank you.
All right. Now, I wanted to just talk to you about another project, a potential project that's created. You may have noticed down at the Eaton Elementary School, that if you stand at the front entrance and you look at the very top of the building, you're going to see a big blue tarp wrapped around what looks like a chimney. We had some water infiltration issues that have gotten extremely serious, and I sent the guys up, and I said, "Let's find out what's going on." And what we had found is that we had water getting into the brickwork in that section of the chimney, which is actually over that center stairwell, to the point where the brickwork is now, and the sandstone is separated and extremely damaged. So what we've done at this point is we have tarped it off, keep any more water from getting into the building and getting, and making matters even worse, to try and prolong this till we can figure out how we're going to deal with it. We have an estimate based on, and Troutman's looked at it, based on the conditions that they found, approximately $50,000. We really have three options as to how we can deal with this. First option is, one, we do it through the normal budget. If you do it that way, you get no building heat, which really doesn't make any sense to try and do that. Second option is we declare an emergency. We develop the, this plan specifications, notify the state education department, we have serious condition, it's a health and safety issue, we put it out with bid, and we work the project and get it repaired. Since we're talking about is tearing the thing down and rebuilding it. Third option is we include it in a $1 million capital project that we were asked to put together, and Mr. Gearing is going to talk to you about that project in a few minutes. The question came up at one point is, why don't we just tear it down and leave it? Whenever we have a building, or any school district that has a building that's over 40 years old, you have to present your plans to the state historic preservation organization. The state education department looks, looks upon their opinion very highly, and their job is to make sure that the aesthetics of the buildings are being maintained. And in the case of Eaton Elementary School, I think we stand absolutely no chance at all of that. And in the case of Eden Elementary School, I think we stand absolutely no chance at all of them saying, yeah, go ahead and rip it down. It's just not going to happen. That leaves us with those three options as to how we're going to deal with it. Obviously, this isn't a good budget here, and the next year certainly doesn't look to be any better. But I at least wanted to make you aware of the situation. For the time being, the blue tarp is just going to stay there until we decide how we're going to do it. But we are going to have to make some kind of a decision as to how those things are going to be prepared.
Building's declaring an emergency, is that, is that stateable?
Yes, we will get building heat in a project once it's completed and we file the final reports.
We can do that to suffer a one-off project?
One-off project. You indicated that it was a, my vote to fix it was sixty thousand.
It's just an estimate.
It's an estimate.
Let's call it a pre-designed estimate.
Would that fall in the general construction where we have about seventy K budget left over to fix? I don't know if we could do it through that question. We have to look into it, see if we can. That would be a question we'll have to call the state.
We have to see what this call, what work was.
To determine what this school work is. That budget availability left is, and this is just a construction cost, you have about twenty percent of that for soft costs. You're, you're getting close, but could be a possibility. I'm, I'm more concerned that once we start getting up there and opening it up, what other problems we might have. As you'll see when I get to the, the bottom of the, the project, Dave refers to it as a million dollar budget. We always put at this level, a pre-designed level, we put some contingency on. Because as you open things up and start looking at them, everything tends to get a little higher.
Is there a risk of more damage if it's not done in the right way?
My greatest concern about it is the fact that it's old and dangerous. And yes, um, if, if it does start to deteriorate more, we're probably going to have to shut that entrance completely off. Because I don't want any burden coming down on anybody.
What's the downside of declaring emergency? Very hard on that.
There really isn't a downside to it, I mean, it's, it's just there and bang.
I would think we don't really have a choice of declaring emergency and then determining the funding, whether it can be through one of the, some of the money that's left over from one of the other projects, or we have to refund it or go to, go reserve fund.
You have the property reserves, right?
Right, correct.
We have that, we need voter approval, I mean, we need to, we want this.
I mean, those are all personal things we can, we've got, you know, three different options we can look at funding it, but I think it's probably, you know, important that we declare an emergency and then move forward with how we're going to fund it. It's got to be fixed.
Is that your recommendation?
I would say, yeah, let's, let's declare an emergency if design done and have ready to go. As soon as the weather breaks, we can start, get a contractor on board and have it pared down and start rebuilding. Let's, let's get back to declaring an emergency, is there any order the state can put up or?
We would, we would have to pick it up in some fashion through the money that we got set aside and use the projects that are right there out of the general fund budget, out of reserve fund, which right now.
Transfer from our unappropriated stock balance potentially.
We would have to go all, all the paperwork into SED and get the approval. They do allow you to progress with putting specs together, bidding it out, and then following up with a design package and a whole official package just to show that you've done your homework, you've done the whole thing. But in an emergency, they let you proceed without them granting you approval. Who's the official building coordinator?
What's the state aid portion on that?
Have we a state's assistance?
And again, we, we recover that when the project is completed and all the paperwork is submitted. Again, under the emergency, you don't have to go to voters for that.
That's, that's.
That's a good one.
Um, can you make a motion after we do that? Require an emergency. Do that number, you want to go through some more stuff first?
Um, if you want to get it out of the way, we can get off the plate.
And it is encoded in this one million dollar project also, so if we come off of this and go to an emergency where it would be in within the one million dollars, right?
Then I can decide after. I make a motion that we declare emergency on the roof at the elementary building and proceed to get those repairs to.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Thank you. The, the last order of business here is, we were asked to develop a one million dollar capital construction project. And what we did in order to put that project together is we looked at our building condition survey that was done in two thousand and ten. We picked out the issues that were health and safety related and most critical. And right, Mr. Gary Contropin is going to talk to you about those items and that project. Just then, at half thirty he's finished with that, then you decide, you know, and talk about it as to where you want to move forward or not move forward with the project.
Okay, this, as Dave mentioned, about a year ago, we presented this whole booklet to you. We had a work session, and they glued the board and we went over this whole package. And the handout that Lisa gave you about the second, third page end, it starts with a highlighted spreadsheet of like this. All the highlighted items are the, first of all, this whole page two, or it's one, two, and three, those were the five-year summary that we came up with a year ago, these three pages. And recall, the third page was about an eight million dollar proposal. Then we were asked to look at a one million dollar, if you were to take these, what is the highest priorities based on health and safety and long-term and priorities one through five, what would be your recommendation? And we've done that, I, I won't go down through all of them, you can see it's the highlighted items. On the left-hand column under priority, I've just noted them, it's not priority one, it's just items one, two, three, all the way down. Uh, and they jump around a little bit from school to school. These were originally sorted by priorities, and then we went down and we prioritized them again, leaving them in the same order, so there's some elementary, then GLP, and the senior high. Over onto the second page, there's three at the top, three items, and two or three down the bottom. And nothing on the third page of that spreadsheet. If you take the items I just highlighted and go on to the next page, it's just the printed items. Okay? Capital improvement project's priority list and following work items are selected from the district's five-year, uh, five-year plan summary. Selective demolition was also done on some of the items at the end of the building condition survey. We did some investigative work. The gym wall down here is one of those items. And current, any current needs that were needed, we proposed investigation. And knowing that some of the contract work that we just did out and we just talked about earlier on at the end of the Excel, that some of that work might not be awarded, and because that was a priority earlier, it remains on this list. So the first page of this, the items selected from the five-year plan, it's the item one through seventeen. On the next page, it's the items that were selected from the further investigation. The one wall at the gymnasium, the locker room, and the corridor, that was, uh, we did an investigation, we had contractors come in, take out some of the brick, look at the condition, understand what full scope of that project was. We budgeted that at about a hundred and fifty thousand. We also added and did an investigation on the providing AC at the server room in the high school. We budgeted that at fifty-eight thousand. And then the items that were just currently not awarded in that project. Cafeteria ceiling, some masonry repointing at GLP, replacement of gravity relief at GLP. Those three items were twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-five thousand. And then some of the recent items we just mentioned, the masonry and roof restoration at Eden Elementary. The front's, the front's stairs area and then the chimney space, item number twenty-four for fifty thousand as we just mentioned. And then we put about a seven percent contingency, a design contingency on those items. At about sixty-one thousand, so then that all came up to about a million dollar budget. If you were to take those highest priorities and decide that a million dollar fund referendum should be considered. Be glad to take any questions on any of those highlighted items.
Based on what we have just talked about with the repair of the elementary school, there, there will be that additional fifty thousand dollars now that we can look at doing another item off of the building condition survey. What would be the time period that you would love to get this done, a year, two years?
Uh, no, it would probably be next year. This whole highlighted list, we go to referendum, probably in the spring here, in May. Uh, then two or three months of design work submitted into late summer or early fall to SED. Uh, two, three, four months of review, depending on their work rate, and have a mid-winter, just about a year from now, awarded and have everything geared up to do in the summer of two thousand and thirteen. That would be a logical schedule if you were to attack on this.
Good that we declared emergency, that's good.
And this is aid or some state reimbursement?
That's why I think Colin has helped people at the court here around the table when we did that. The million dollar number was showed because of the seventy, the seventy percent reimbursement and the fact that the capital reserve has about four hundred thousand dollars, so we would make it. Question, if state experts will, it's, you have to generate additional funds.
Even those that have to be approved by other voters, we do have some, for certain, some work to shuffle by.
Correct, there's a point of not going out. It's kind of going to make the difference. Two million dollars, seven hundred, eight hundred thousand are not going to be covered by aid.
Are we hearing anything about the percentage of aid going down?
There's still discussion on that, there's nothing, you know, definitive, I don't have any discussion.
We use reserves to, to a project, say, a fifty thousand dollar elementary roof. Like the eighty percent aid comes back, some require being put back in reserve and we put it to general cost.
Typically, it goes from down with funds.
Anybody have any questions? Did you have any questions?
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you.
Are there any requests for I, for consensus?
Any requests about you?
All right, uh, I moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following consensus item to be approved that is listed in the administrative memorandum, A, F through B, F through N, P and Q.
Sorry, discussions? Alter, I opposed, motion carries.
I, E, approval of multi-fund warrant. I moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the multi-fund warrant for the period ending January thirty-one, two thousand and two, in the amount, in the amount of one million, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty cents to be approved. This warrant is broken down as follows. General fund portion, one million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. Cafeteria fund portion, thirty-five thousand, eighty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. Federal fund portion, thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-six cents. Capital portion, fifty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. And prestonade seat portion, eighty thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second, discussion?
I have a problem, I guess, with the bill from Harper Seacrest, uh, for twenty-three hundred dollars. Three hours of that was for something that we asked him to look into, and I'm uncomfortable with his answer. I think what he did was find more of a way around it, and that was that we violated the policy. And appointment with Harper Seacrest, and then there's an additional nine hours for month of December that he charges or billed us for that. I guess in his presentation to the, his word was to be transparent, that he would notify all board members, anything that went on, that there's nine hours, I don't know if it was done, supposedly for the school board, but I had absolutely no information on it.
I think you gave information about some of it, correct?
Harvey?
We told you about some of it, the, the, you can look up the complaint sheet I had last time about the process. So we understand that, we hold it.
The process, I disagree, I think.
Is this very, is this appointment, legal process?
On his appointment, I believe that he was asked if we violated the policy. His response did not address that, his response was how, if it was legal, what we did per state. But the school policy calls for certain requirements, you know, bidder notification, the reason why. If we did not accept it, the bid should have been severed. It's, it all should have involved money that wasn't done, that was not addressed. Yes, New York State says you can do this under these circumstances, that's what he answered. He did not answer the bid modified into our policy.
That's accurate, he did address both.
Harvey?
He did address both.
Well, I, that's a disagreement, and again, that's three hours. Um, if we let it go down, three hours of a bill that, that again, I disagree with, and I don't think the question's answered, and I think even as an original thing, yes, this is what I'm going to answer if it didn't. And then there's another additional nine hours, and I still have not got anything on this bill or most. And to vote on a bill, I just, I think that I have a right to have it. Well, I guess I'll ask all the board members, if they got any information, it's nine hours.
I haven't seen the bills, Harvey? I haven't seen the bills, I don't know.
Then how do we vote on that bill tonight? If he was president, haven't seen it.
Because we want all the ones, if you would like to micromanage all of Harvey, light them and all the work pad?
That's a good word, micromanage.
Any other, discussion items?
Colin, so at, at the time we appointed counsel, I, I made the offer to continue to look at it on an ongoing basis and audit the bills. So in order for me to do that, I guess I would ask if administration, if the bills are going to administration.
There are, there are most, but I'm sure, so everybody can do it.
Don't we have somebody in the district to do that, or do we have an internal auditor to look at that and everything?
Well, I'm talking about legal bills specifically, because we had so much discussion about that. I mean, I mean that also they do that, correct?
Well, the claims auditor just makes sure that the claims are appropriate. They're not going to know what services were performed for what, and they won't be able to know that.
Well, they have a post, our post is at zero point for, for anybody to, have you ever, here.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed.
Opposed.
extensions, motion carries.
Leave of absence. Prove leave of absence. I moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, childbearing leave of absence to be approved for Vanessa's home affected approximately March twenty-ninth, two thousand and two, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve.
Second, discussion? I was curious, given the timeframe that she's on, who's, who's faculty now?
Um, there, there'd be some, and we haven't, Vanessa hasn't been appointed yet at this point.
That is, I, I don't have the question. We have a librarian that's a substitute, is that someone that's librarian training?
You may have, unless I.
Sure, try, try get a librarian. All right. All in favor? I opposed, extension, motion carries. Okay, if we're in the point of the agenda, where we ask anyone who'd like to speak, come on up for two minutes. We do ask you to identify yourself and your affiliation and, probably in two minutes.
Hello again. Most of you know me, my name is Paula Schelll, and I teach first grade at the GLP Primary School, but I'm here tonight as a representative of the Eden Teachers Association. It was just more than a year ago that I stood in this very spot, talking about this same topic, so here I go again, class size matters. If the district had not eliminated a first grade classroom this year, there would have been nineteen students in my classroom rather than twenty-four. I can do more than imagine because I'm living this reality, the difference twenty percent fewer students would mean in increased student contact, greater opportunities for student participation, and greater individual attention. We'd like to remind you again on how research backs up the importance of smaller class size and if the students show, and if the studies show, I'm sorry, that students who come from smaller classes do better in every way that can be measured. They achieve, they achieve significantly higher test scores, they see better grades, and they have approved, they have approved attendance. Isn't this Board of Education's goal? Well, what a contradiction to set a goal to improve Eden's academic standing and then increase class size when you know that it's going to impede our reaching a goal. We understand a bunch of questions are weighing on the district and we, but we have a moral obligation to provide the best possible education for our children. Actually, smaller classes could be cost-effective and that fewer students will need academic intervention because it's proven that reducing class size in the early grades shrinks academic achievement gap substantially. Please bear with me while I mention just a few more facts regarding smaller class size. Number one, studies show that for children at the beginning of schooling, like grades K through two, there are significant gains in reading and math in smaller class size. Number two, the benefits of class size reduction in the early grades last throughout a student's educational career. Studies show that students coming from smaller class sizes in the early grades were almost a year ahead, a full year ahead by the time they reach eighth grade. How can you deny that? Behavior problems are greatly reduced in smaller classes. Smaller class sizes result in a higher teacher morale and it reduces stress. Fewer retentions, fewer referrals to special education, and fewer dropouts are the ultimate rewards to class size reductions. I was listening to an app the other day, just recently for a private school, and one of their big selling points was smaller class size. Well, obviously, they and the parents that they're speaking to understand the importance of small class size. Well, lately, we've been hearing a lot about how, what this district is doing and what that district is doing, especially in regard to smaller class size. Well, I don't think we should look at other, to the other, these other districts for answers. I think it's time that the Eden Central School District take a leadership stand on this. I think that you should forget what others are doing and do what you know is best for the children who need it. If you want Eden students to be leaders, then I think we need to moderate leadership. I think we need to get back to doing what is in the best interest of our students. Thank you for giving me this benefit.
Any else?
My name is Katie Kraus. I'm here to actually talk about an online fundraiser that Eden PTA has had for the last year and a half. It's an online shopping site, so I would like some participation. Does anybody have a computer? Does anybody shop online? If you don't shop online, do you know anybody that does? Okay, so with that, do you take vitamins? Any supplements? Do you use protein drinks? Do you wear makeup? Makeup, anybody, makeup? Wash your hair? Use toilet paper? How about computery? Clean your house? Buy cleaning supplies? Buy electronics, iPods? Do you buy songs off of iTunes? Anything? Shake your legs? Do you go on vacation? Do you order your tickets online? Through this ongoing fundraiser that we have through the PTA, they have the potential to earn a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars a year. No cost at all to the school, but we have to have participation and people actually using this website. It's shopping that you're already doing when you're shopping online if you would just get on this website and purchase through there. Any of the Market America branded products where there's thousands of them, all retail profit goes to the school. No cost. There's absolutely no cost to the school, this is free. We are bigger than Amazon. We are almost bigger than Yahoo. We have the opportunity for free to earn this money. The PTA, they're, I printed this off, it's a newsletter for this week. The junior senior high schools PTA sponsors field trips, scholarships, awards, and ceremonies that recognize students, excellence, and reward their accomplishments. These programs and activities are in danger of being downsized as fundraising participation continues to decline. Today, thirty-three percent of families have become members, but if we were to achieve full participation, we would be able to significantly reuse the number of fundraisers, which I eat fundraisers. Zap a snacks? No, I don't want to buy them. I don't necessarily want to buy a hundred pies. I don't like the revenue paper stuff that comes home. I don't want revenue paper for ten dollars and you get two sheets. No. With this fundraiser, it's shopping you're already doing, so why not support the schools? It's a no-brainer. So I do have some flyers. If anybody is interested, I would love for you to take this flyer. It takes approximately twelve seconds to register on this website. Bookmark it when you're going to shop online, please just pull it up, there's thousands of Parker stores. I'll just name a few. There's Aeropostale, Adidas, American Eagle, Banana Republic, Barnes &amp; Noble, Dick's Sporting Goods, Famous Footwear, Gap, Dell, Oriental Trading Company, Mr. Arns, Mayor, Macy's, Levi's, Lowe's. You earn two percent cash back at Lowe's, go to some chocolate Lowe's for all your home projects. Okay, finish lot, there's thousands of Parker stores on here. I'm going to say after, please take a flyer, check it out, like I said, it's totally free to register. Thank you.
Any else? Thank you.
Any other new business? No reservations or appointments, so I'll see. Approved energy management initiative. I moved it upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Eden School District wishes to participate in the Cooperative Technology Power Management and Plan Protection Program conducted by the bosses of Western New York, when you write in accordance with Education Law Section nineteen fifty and General Municipal Law Section one nineteen oh.
Second, discussion?
This is a energy grant that we already won, when you're applying for it and continue to maintain, to allow districts, and looking at it over three years, it will cost the districts to power down our servers automatically, as well as off our computers. We do, we do some of that already in the district ourselves, but this would also power down servers and switches that aren't used in certain things. We have an energy and cost savings to us too.
Can we just participate instead of the, yeah?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Approved resolution to accept bids for Excel Phase Two and Shared Decision Making Team Number Two Phase Two projects. I moved it upon the recommendation of superintendent, a motion is made to award the bid for the Excel Phase Two project to Remarkal Inc. in the amount of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred dollars, and award the bid for Shared Decision Making Team Number Two Phase Two project to Weed and Electric Inc. in the amount of sixty-five thousand.
Second, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, extensions, motion carries.
Approved budget increase. I moved it upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the two thousand and eleven, twelve budget be increased by ten thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-four cents to twenty-six thousand, one hundred and, twenty-six, one hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seventy-six cents to account for increased revenues. Note that this received three hundred and fifty dollars from Justin's for junior senior high school reading contribution, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-four cents from junior senior high musical for hired musician positions, eight thousand, three hundred and eight dollars from the All Sports Theater Club for modified lacrosse, and six hundred dollars from El Paso Club for lacrosse.
Second, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
To presentations, the first one we have our brief shared decision-making team updates to compare us up to date and how each team's and what those teams are. Start with GLP.
Hi, I'm Carol Stumpf, and this is Captain Liberty, and we're members of GLP Shared Decision Making Team. The GLP Shared Decision Making Team meets about six, seven times a year. At these meetings, we discuss a variety of topics specifically geared to the GLP, as well as the information that's handed down to us from the district level and the shared decision-making team. Currently, we're discussing some of these topics. PARP is currently up and running at the GLP. PARP stands for Parents is Reading Partners. This year, we refocused our efforts to follow the mission of the PTA, which began PARP in nineteen eighty-seven. The mission is to encourage more reading at home. Parents truly are role models for their children. Therefore, the emphasis is placed on teaching the parents how to read to their child through the school-based daily guide program. So far, we've received many positive comments from families who are participating in that program. We have also discussed revitalizing the pre-k playground, as well as the Dignity for All Students Act, which is a new initiative that we know is coming to us in the fall, and we are waiting for work rates to facilitate this new mandate. We also discussed a variety of fundraising opportunities, as well as assemblies and activities for the children and families here at GLP.
Is there anything you, do you help with in the board already?
That's time, but if we do, we will, thank you.